Okay, it's seven o'clock. I will rely on my voice. If you want me to use this microphone, I will. Can everybody hear me? Or do you want me to use this?
Yeah.
Use it.
Okay, I will use the microphone. All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll start this public hearing. First, I'd like to make some introductions. We have Nancy Johnson here, which is our professional sonographer. She's going to be taking minutes tonight at the meeting. And we also have video recorders. This whole proceeding will be video recorded and taped. And I would give a couple of other introductions. We have Larry Kastner and Ed Hahn, two new members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Larry's from La Crescent and Edison Jefferson Township, right? Okay. And we'd also like to thank Charlie Weiser for all the years that you served on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Darla Moe. Both of those members are going off to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Larry and Ed are taking their place. Okay, well, as you know, this public hearing is on the draft ordinance that covers mineral extraction in Houston County. This draft is a result of three years of work by two separate Houston County study committees. Those members were appointed by the Houston County Commissioners. Some of the language in this draft is taken from the original study committee that met in 2013. Some of the language is taken from the Minnesota Environmental Quality Review Board's recommendations, and some of the language is from our committee meetings during this past year. Is this draft perfect? Probably not. Those of us in the planning commission are aware that there's a wide range of opinions regarding this draft. Okay. At this public hearing, please limit your comments to the language in the draft. The language in the draft is the only thing that's actionable at this point. And we originally started out that we were going to limit your speaking to two minutes, but we think with the number of people that we got signed up, we can extend that to three minutes. And Rick Frank is over here. Rick, Rick is our timekeeper. So you're going to, we'll actually give you an extra minute to talk. We're going to allow you to speak three minutes. Anytime, the Planning and Zoning Commission members may ask you some questions about your comments. They may or they may not, but they're free to do so if they want to. If they do, we will allow you some extra time to answer their questions. Okay, at this point, I'd like to continue with another introduction that asks to introduce our new county attorney, Samuel Giont. And Sam will cover the ground rules for tonight's meeting. I've spoken with Chairperson Griffin. Here, I'm going to give you this. I spoke with Chairperson Griffin, and this is the ground rules that we came up for tonight's meeting. You must sign up on a sign-up sheet in order to speak. Each person will be given, again, the maximum of three minutes to speak, and you can only speak one at a time. No deferring or giving your time on the floor to another individual. In other words, you must speak on your own behalf. No slander, vulgar language, derogatory remarks, belamings, or finger pointing will be allowed. No cross-talk or rebuttal remarks toward another speaker. Everyone will remain quiet unless it is your turn to speak. Failure to follow these rules will result in a warning by the chair. Failure to cooperate with the warning by the chair will result in your removal. Okay, thanks, Sam. Our first speaker is Dewey Seaberson, and following Dewey Seaberson is Ann Emmerich. So Dewey.
Dewey Seaberson from La Crescent Township. My comment will be very brief. It appears that some of this started with the haves and have-nots, and that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about where it might be overly aggressive on this ordinance, that it could affect existing quarries that are in, worked properly and legally. A lot of our townships or county rely on getting product from quarries, sand, rock, and so on. It affects our roads, it affects our building sites, and so on. I could just point out, just be cautious not to get overly aggressive to affect what's going on and what's gone on in the past that are legal. Sometimes we get overzealous and put in too much, and that's basic of my thoughts, is careful not to go beyond what we're talking about when starting this whole program.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next speaker is Ann Emmerich. And Farrell, is it Farrell, I'm sure it is it? Lowell, 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 I should be there.
I guess I'd just like to give her, say the same thing he did. I'm on the township board for Caladonia, and I'm worried that if we put our rock quarries out of production, we're not going to have roads. This last winter really slammed us hard. We had to buy a lot of cement, rock, and we're still digging out from under that this year. We also had two big gully washers on those couple of years where we had to use a lot of rock and shore up the landslides. So I would caution you to please look things over very carefully so we don't end up with unintended consequences.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Lowell, I'm sure.
My name is Lowell Bautcher. I'm in the rock cooking business. I'll just do it real quick. The industrial sand and the quarries have got to be, have each their own zoning. They can't interchange because of the way it is, you can remove whatever you want into them. You need one for industrial sand, one for quarry. The quarries that are already permitted or grandfathered in are going to have to stay the way they are because they are already here. Let's see. There's an item in the book that says that you have to have license blasting. Minnesota does not have license blasting. I checked last Tuesday, and Minnesota does not have a blasting license.
Blasting license.
For blasting in quarries.
They don't have a license.
They're not, the blasters are not required to be licensed in Minnesota at this time.
Okay.
Okay, I was going to ask you something else, but I forgot. Yes, that'll do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One question. One question, Lowell.
Larry, yeah. Was that, did you mean to say that they don't, they don't require licenses, or they don't have a process?
They don't. Minnesota does not have a requirement for blasters, right? Iowa has one, Wisconsin has one, but the guys that come out for duty do not have, they need a license in Minnesota.
But do they have a process for licensing?
Not that I, I just asked the blasters that come last Tuesday, and he said, I asked him if he was licensed, and he said, not in Minnesota because they don't.
Okay.
Yeah. If there might be something in the works that I don't know.
They're regulated by the ATF. The blasting and all that is.
No, this is regulated by the state for licensing.
All right, okay. All right, very good. Thank you, Lowell. Lowell, one question.
He is a licensed blaster.
He works for a licensed company.
He is a licensed blaster.
He is a licensed, but Minnesota does not have a requirement to have a license. He's licensed in Iowa, he's licensed in Wisconsin. If he would have to be in Minnesota, he would be also.
Sure. Okay, Lowell. Thank you. Okay. Our next speaker is Alan Schultz, followed by Fred Kupo. Alan.
I'm Alan Schultz, and I live in Caladonia. And I work for Milestone Materials and BD of Operations, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the company, and I guess myself also. Milestone owns and operates numerous quarries in Houston County and employs over fifty people between Milestone and our other sister divisions. And we'd like to ask the planning commission and county board to consider the overall impact of this proposed mining ordinance and its long-term sustainability of aggregate resources in Houston County. As it's written right now, non-conforming mines are basically all going to lose their status of being, and have to require an interim use permit. And this is going to cost the county a lot of reserves. It's going to cost the county a lot of money. It's going to raise everybody's taxes. Products are going to have to be imported. There are a number of concerns that we have on the proposed ordinance, which we've submitted a letter, and it's going to be posted online. Some of those to highlight the volume limits. This is only commerce use, road use agreements. They need to pay for road studies and then have an agreement with the governing authority on the road activities that are allowed within the IUP if it's adopted. One major concern is only materials that are excavated on a site can be processed on that site. There's a lot of materials that are haul from different locations to meet specifications from one quarry to another. So that would rule that out. It would rule out blacktop recycling, it would rule out concrete recycling. So that's one sentence that we're concerned about. And then we feel that the existing Houston County zoning policy conditional use permit process along with the oversight regulations of the MPCA and Minnesota DNR have been successful in controlling and regulating the non-metallic mining industries. We ask that you adopt reasonable and consistent rules and consider monitoring the proposed ordinance with input from all parties concerned in dealing with industrial effects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, our next speaker, Speaker Fred Kupo, followed by Ron Fadness.
Good evening. My name is Fred Kupo, and I've been a lifelong resident and taxpayer of your county. From the early seventies to 2007, I've managed and operated quarries and sand pits in Houston County. I disagree with the proposed ordinance as it relates to the existing and proposed quarries and sand pits for Houston County. Houston County is blessed to have high-quality aggregates and sources throughout the county. These sites are a valuable resource for ready-mix and asphalt production, road maintenance, aggline, and riprap for our rivers and streams. This proposal is going to give a huge negative impact on businesses and the companies that are supplying these aggregates and all the needs for the counties. Since 2012, Houston County has had a moratorium on silica sand mining to study its effects and impacts. There is no information or proof of this in the proposed ordinance to substantiate any negative effects of silicon mining or any other types of mining. The mines that are in existence today are highly regulated, operating under mine safety, Minnesota Pollution Control Authority, DNR, conditional use and county zoning, and all of which has been working for years. This ordinance is going to put substantial costs on our industry, and which in turn affects us all. Commissioners, everything we have comes from mines, forests, and the earth. If frac sand is an issue, let's draft an ordinance for that industry and not adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, our next speaker is Ron Fadness, followed by, is it Jack?
My name is Ron Fadness, and I'm here on behalf of Booting Rock Products, which is headquartered in Decora, Iowa, and operates nine limestone quarries in Houston County. Each of these quarries has been in operation since the 1950s, with most dating back to the 1930s. Our company was founded in 1932, and throughout its history has focused on the production of limestone products for roadways, construction, ready-mix concrete, and aggline. It is apparent that concerns about silica sand mining have engendered a great deal of concern, confusion, and misinformation. Contrary to statements recently published in the local newspaper, we have never produced frac sand at the Wimbege quarry or anywhere else. Just yet otherwise, to recklessly make false statements without regard for the truth. My main point is simple. We ask that discussions be truthful, that deliberations be based on facts, and that limestone quarries not be lumping with frac sand mining. We provide the materials that local governments need to build and maintain roads. More than eighty percent of our production is purchased by local governments, with the remainder being sold to local individuals or companies for use in construction and ready-mix. Any increased costs resulting from new regulations will be passed along to the end user, primarily Houston County and the townships within Houston County. Other counties in which we operate have chosen to adopt a new ordinance dealing strictly with frac sand, rather than attempting to cover everything in one mineral extraction, the extraction use. We believe that would be the best course for Houston County as well. Several of the written comments submitted online before this hearing note that the current proposal doesn't seem to address either limestone or frac sand operations very well. Let me suggest that this is because of fundamental differences between the limestone quarries and the potential frac sand facilities that the ordinance would control. Limestone is produced intermittently for local use, whereas frac sand is produced continually for use far away. I encourage everyone to differentiate between limestone quarries and frac sand operations. I hope that this ongoing process leads to sound public policy that is based on honest discussion and fact, on the facts, and towards the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ron. Jack.
Yes, it's Jack Knight. From Allen Key County Soil and Water Board, Resource Conservation Development Board, Turkey River Management Watershed Authority, as well as one of the primary researchers and authors of the Allen Key Ordinance. I previously submitted online detailed comments pertaining to different subsections and recommendations there. So I'm not going to do that, but I just have, you might wonder why someone from Allen Key County is so interested in what you're doing here, but just recently, well, in the past couple of years, a mining interest in Minnesota had a proposal that included shipping sand out of New Alvin, Iowa to avoid Minnesota taxes, the taxes that have been proposed. Those taxes are levied at the site that it's loaded. And by shipping out of Iowa, they avoid those taxes, and millions of dollars in revenue that the state of Minnesota intends to reimburse communities. An active, lots of active mines in Houston County would target New Alvin as a load-out site. We, and we don't want it there. We don't want to turn New Alvin into an industrial zone, and that's the prime reason that I'm I would be glad to help your planning and zoning and your commissioners look at the Allen Key Ordinance. I can explain the legal research that went behind it. It's well researched, well thought out. It was a consensus document. There was no opposition to it, and I would be glad to help you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
You'll be up questions for me in the future as you go to rewrite this.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Yeah, our next speaker is Bruce Scarmann.
Bruce came up with Carmichael, he's a football player.
Okay, very good.
From the Green Bay Packers. Go Pack! I am absolutely astounded, amazed, and astonished that I don't have to speak tonight. The miners have done it for me. Thank you very much.
Bruce, our next speaker is Noel.
No comment.
No, pass.
Yeah, pass.
Okay. Our next speaker is Dana Bucky, followed by Subhan Mark.
Yeah, I'm surprised that I'm here in the miners and feeling some agreement with them. I was at the commissioners' meeting last spring when the committee was tasked with creating an industrial ordinance. And somewhere along the line, people, it seems to happen a lot in this county right now, people just decided, well, we don't care what the commissioners said, and we don't care, therefore, what is implied that the taxpayers were willing to pay to have done. And they started just pushing a one-size-fits-all ordinance, so, you know, construction sand and not industrial sand ordinance. So now, it's my understanding, and there are others who can speak to this better than I can, but it's my understanding that when you follow the money, there are hidden financial benefits to those who would mine frac sand because of this one-size-fits-all ordinance. The taxes, if, frac sand is much more lucrative when you sell that, so you're going to be making more money than if you're selling construction sand. So that land is taxed at a different rate, but the people selling that sand are going to be making a lot more money, so there's hidden financial benefits. Now, somewhere along the line, I'm not saying that everyone on that committee knew about these hidden financial benefits. Maybe none of the people on that committee knew about these hidden financial benefits to those who would mine frac sand, but somebody pushed this, and I think the citizens have a right to know who pushed this. Because you could not have arrived at this clever writing accidentally and innocently. Somebody pushed this. Somebody knew about the hidden financial benefits.
You're getting close to getting out of order. You stick to your comments here about this. Stop accusing the study committee members.
I said I don't think that.
Okay, well, don't even suggest it. I'm warning you.
Okay, I'm done, because I already said what I needed to say. There are hidden financial benefits.
Thank you, guys. Our next speaker is Subhan Mark.
My name is Subhan Mark from Yucatan Township. There are three reasons this ordinance can't actually regulate anything: lack of enforcement, no enforcement, and it won't be enforced. Regarding mine size and mine density, having a size limit of 20 acres is a blatant end run around the environmental review process. Mines less than 20 acres will not require an EAW, so it will now be legal to mine 1,000 acres as long as it is done 20 acres at a time. Of course, they will have to sprinkle a little grass seed over the previous 20 acres if you're starting on a new area. Have you also forgotten that according to the EQB, the cumulative impact of all the mines in the area must be considered? Five mines that were managed by Minnesota Sands were going to be managed by them. Some less than 20 acres were considered phased and connected, and an EIS was required on all of them. Mines will be allowed, will be allowed a mile apart. Do you really think that two people who own mines one mile apart and a third person between them applies for a permit, and it is denied, that he will not sue and win? What is the rationale for this arbitrary ruling? Anyway, this will allow for hundreds of mines in the county. Is that what the people here really want? This ordinance is nothing more than a bunch of arbitrary regulations that will not be enforced and will not stand up in court. It is an attempt to avoid the environmental review process, but I don't think that will work given the cumulative impacts. It looks like the only way out of this that leaves roads, property values, air, water, tourists, and health is scenery intact is a ban. Please do the right thing and ban this cancer from our community.
Thank you. Yeah, our next speaker is Michael Fields.
Michael Fields, Wimbege Township. The best gauge of future behavior is past behavior. Rick Frank has said several times that Environmental Services doesn't have the staff or resources to adequately monitor a bunch of new mines and would welcome citizen complaints to alert him to a problem. Well, about four years ago, my wife and I lodged a complaint when the mining operation next to our farm blasted boulders and clay onto our total acreage, and then encroached worth of halfway and took onto our setback. We wanted the soil that was taken put back, and that's when we suddenly found ourselves in a legal battle with the county. When it finally became obvious that the county had no intention to enforce its own ordinance, we were forced to lawyer up and serve the complaint to the county attorney. And that's when things got really weird. With the help of a private attorney in Minneapolis, who incidentally has a 20-year working relationship with Rick Frank, the county countersued us because we neglected to also serve the complaint to the county auditor. So we were off to district court, not to argue the merits of our complaint against the county, but to settle a bit of arcane bureaucratic minutia. We were obviously being bullied, but this business of serving complaints to the auditor had to be settled in our favor first. We won a district court in 2011. The county appealed. We won our appellate court in 2012. To keep us spending money, the county appealed that decision, and the case went all the way to the state Supreme Court on April Fool's Day, 2013. No kidding. And that's where we finally lost. The county had succeeded in denying the dispute process. This anecdote just goes to show how far this county will go to protect mining interests. This new ordinance will not be enforced. The best gauge of future behavior is past behavior.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions? Okay, our next speaker is Herb Balltel, followed by John Beckman.
My name is Herb Balltel. I'm from Chaseburg, Wisconsin, so I had to drive over an hour to get here. I'm here because industrial mining is a regional issue. It's not just a Houston County issue. I really want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. As I look around, this is what democracy looks like. And what I'm hearing tonight is that nobody is speaking in favor of this ordinance, absolutely nobody. My suggestion is that this document be totally scrapped. I know that the zoning committee worked long and hard on this, but obviously, there wasn't enough citizen input. My suggestion tonight, although my original comments were going to be much different from this, but in listening to others, people need to start over. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Next speaker is John Beckman, followed by Bob Burns.
I've been on the town board for Houston Township for twenty-some odd years, and this farmer, of course, this ordinance is adopted as it sits today. It's going to do, cause undue costs to townships and farmers if they want to put mine on or any construction sand or, you know, whatever needs, you know, whatever cement or whatever. I think there needs to be some more thought out, you know, equating a lot of the other comments. We have aggregate mines, and we have silica sand mines, and I think we maybe can't regulate everything with an ordinance. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks, John. Any other questions, John? Our next speaker is Bob Burns.
I'm Bob Burns, Caladonia, Minnesota. The reason I wanted to speak is I have concerns with regard to the cost that the townships, cities, the county, the state, businesses, and citizens in Houston County are going to incur if this ordinance is passed in its present form. My concerns deal with the vagaries in the ordinance as it's written. There's a lot of maze in there that, you know, when will you, when won't you, kind of goes to what he said as far as enforcement, and who's going to get required to do these reports and studies and whatnot, and who's not. So the vagaries bother me a little bit, and there's a lot of new fees and charges as far as hydrologists and geologists and consultants and whatnot that are in this. far as hydrologists and geologists and consultants and whatnot that are in this format that we did not have in the prior ordinance, that is going to raise the cost of doing business in an ag-related field in Houston County. I mean, the crushing of crushed rock, the bringing of sand out of the soils have numerous uses in Houston County. The townships are all gravel roads in Houston County, as we know, so there's going to be an increase in cost for them. So I would hope that the ordinance, one, can be written so that it's uniform for everybody without the vagaries. And I know that things change over time, it's an old ordinance that we have, and we're going to make some changes, and the silica sand is the biggest issue that we're dealing with, and this is trying to bring it in under all of that. But I would be very happy that you would make this so that the pendulum doesn't swing too far, that we don't force all the quarries and all the operations that we have in Houston County out of business because our prices are going to get so high compared to new business compared to what our neighboring counties and states are. So I would have concerns in that regard, and just hope that you can find ways to make this a little more uniform and fair for everybody involved in the mining operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions? Okay, our next speaker, our first speaker is Robin Jumper.
I do have to change my remarks because of what I had chosen to say, so many people have covered it already. But I'm really glad that Mr. Burns made the point that there were too many vagaries. You don't write the document that requires some kind of legal support that says may. There's no way to enforce a may, or a might, you have to say shall, that's just the way things are written. But I was also at the meeting last spring when three of the county board members, because I'm the three, or three to vote, said that a ban language needed to be written, and I've yet to read any language talking about banning frac sand mining. So as you consider rewriting this, as so many people in here think you need to do, please consider banning frac sand mining. It's going to hurt other businesses, we're going to lose tourism and tourism jobs. I taught tourism, I went on the state for a few years, so I understand what this is about. This is a disaster. Frac sand mining will be a disaster. We need the other mining.
Okay, thank you, Herb. Okay, Marilyn Fromm, is it?
My name is Marilyn Fromm, I'm a liar from Houston Township. We call our area Bluff Country. Many people have worked diligently for decades to create entities to draw people to our area. Historic Bluff Country professionals worked for years, along with many dedicated local individuals, to have State Highway 16 designated an official federal scenic byway to draw visitors from across the nation who like to travel what are known as the Blue Highways. Investment well into the hundreds of thousands of dollars was made to bring the Root River Bike Trail from Rushford through to Houston. Over $400,000 to build the Houston Nature Center, another $100,000 to create the natural playground at Trailhead Park, and now a projected $6.7 million investing to develop the International Owl Center in Houston, all of which will draw from Rochester's Destination Medical Center, now in development. To protect all these efforts, these investments, and our natural assets, this is a proposal for a Root River corridor overlay district, is being given to you this evening. This overlay district proposal does not require making any changes to the proposed ordinance, it is a separate modification to the zoning ordinance which would be identified in Section 13 with our other zoning and overlay districts such as floodplain, shoreland, and scenic trails. Overlay districts to protect sensitive areas, tourism, and recreational communities from mining activity are common and include Good Hugh County, Minnesota, and Pepin County, Wisconsin. Buffalo County, Wisconsin is currently considering an overlay district of similar proposal. The overlay district would protect the primary scenic and recreational area of Houston County from mining activity, including the forested bluffs of Root River, multiple key Blue Ribbon trout streams, the Root River Bike Trail, the Houston Nature Center, the New International Owl Center, as well as the federal scenic byway State 16. Enforcement of the mining prohibition within the overlay district would be clear and simple: no new permits would be allowed in this area. The overlay district mining prohibition would be compatible with the goals of the Minnesota DNR Trailstein setback program and would be consistent with the state of Minnesota's current watershed priority to protect the Root River watershed. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address the question.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any questions? No? Okay, our next speaker, Henry DeHernery. Kelly, can't read the handwriting.
The one C I got in grammar school was penmanship, so I apologize. It is interesting to listen to these comments. First of all, I'd like to thank those of you who worked on this ordinance and tried to conserve our natural resources and protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Houston County. It's a lot of work, and I do understand that. It's very interesting to listen to what has been said. I have not heard one proponent of large industrial-scale silica sand mining. What I have heard are people who want to protect our area from that and operators that we need, sand, construction sand, gravel, and limestone. We do need that. They're vital businesses in our county. We do need to make certain that they can continue operation. But nobody's here advocating for large-scale industrial silica sand mining, so I find that very interesting. I did, I've completely thrown out what I was going to say, but I do have something to hand out to you. May I approach? When you start talking about 20,000 cubic yards or 60,000 cubic yards, it's really difficult to envision that. How big is that? We all know what a cubic yard looks like. It's about this big, right? One cubic yard, okay? If you start talking about 250, 500, 1,000 cubic yards, they get big. If you talk about 60,000, this little dot down here is a man, and there's a car. Here's a man, and here's a car. That's almost as big as a bluff, okay? What do we call our area? Bluff country. How many bluffs are we going to lose by not limiting the number of mines in the county? This is one year of sand mining, that's the limit. How many years before a bluff is gone, and how many mines before many bluffs are gone? Our area once again is called Bluff country. So I think it would make sense to begin to think about, you know, we understand we need sand mines, we need gravel mines, they're important. How many do we need? And how many should Houston County allow? For example, Fillmore County has limited the number of mines... Oh, am I out? Thank you. Has limited the number of large-scale industrial silica sand mines to five. How many do we need? Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, our next speaker is Steve Hartwick.
My name is Steve Hartwick, I'm a municipal township resident for 38 years. In the proposed ordinance, the only place that effusive dust is addressed is for control of agents on access roads. A dozen years ago, the American Cancer Society said that silica sand is, silica dust is cancerous, and that's a concern to me, isn't 60,000 cubic yards. The volume isn't the issue, it's the product that's coming out of that. The EQB says that every silica sand project involving a mine of any size should conduct monitoring, and every silica sand project involving over-the-road transportation should monitor. Also, in the ordinance, there's mention of stockpiling, but there are nothing in there about volumes or controller containment measures to do with this stockpile. The ordinance also states that there's no hydraulic dredging to be done, assuming that this means that there'll be no mining in the water table. That confirmed. These sand sites, you have a thousand-foot setback. The noise, and most of these projects is maybe at least 100 decibels, it takes 1,500 feet for those decibels to get down to 50 decibels. So you're setting up setbacks that are inadequate. And as far as one mile per frac sand or industrial sand, instead of doing that, why don't we limit it to one per township? This would limit it to 18 in the coming, or 17, I'm not sure, but this would help with traffic congestion. If you have them a mile apart and you have them on a string, there's going to be a string of trucks, and not only is that dangerous in and of itself, but people are going to be passing those trucks, people are going to be driving dangerously to avoid those trucks. And also, if you limit it to one per township, you're going to have a lot more input from the townships, which I think is something we need. And lastly, people mentioned this before, but the language that's in here, the may's, the can'ts, all the indeterminate provisions, this just is waiting for somebody to rule arbitrary impressions. You guys, we need to talk to each other.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Any questions? Okay, our next speaker is Gretchen is a cook.
Good evening, my name is Gretchen Cook, I'm from the city of Letherson. Even a kindergarten can tell you the difference between shall and may and no. No means no. No frac sand mining. You've gotten petitions from the citizenry, a large group of citizenry has said, no, we don't want frac sand mining. Any two-bit attorney can walk right through the shalls and may's, and I descended from one of them, so I can follow two-bit attorneys too. Even Iowa, according to our guest newspaper today, even the citizenry of Iowa is asking us to please reconsider. We need to ban not shall and may, ban frac sand mining. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gretchen. Our last speaker is Ken Jumper here, Bob Burns.
I'm Ken Jumper from the Letherson Township. Like a lot of people here, I'm a lifelong resident of this county. I just want to remind everyone that the role of the planning commission tonight is to make a recommendation to the county board about this proposed draft ordinance, and I want to suggest that the right recommendation to the county commissioners is to reject this proposed ordinance and to adopt a ban on frac sand mining. You know, it's getting to where every meeting in Houston County has a surprise in it, and tonight, I can tell you, and I think I speak for all the people against frac sand mining, that the biggest surprise is that we are all here tonight on the same side of this ordinance as the mining people in this county. They think it's bad, and we think it's bad, and for all the same reason, and I completely agree with Mr. Bocci. The worst part about this draft ordinance, it doesn't make a distinction between industrial sand and construction sand. That's the worst part of this ordinance. We're throwing a whole lot of problems in front of our regular quarries to try to get at a problem that we all know is frac sand mining, okay? Now, there's a lot of other things wrong with this ordinance too. The density regulation is really confusing, it doesn't do enough to protect air and water quality, but it seems to me, and I've done some, I think, pretty sophisticated analysis of this proposed ordinance, this proposed ordinance is robbing this county of a lot of revenue because we don't make that distinction between industrial sand and construction sand. You know, and this county is revenue short, if you haven't noticed the increase in property taxes in the last couple of weeks here. So, the real solution, I think, to this issue is to make a recommendation to ban frac sand mining, and then to pass some updates in the current zoning ordinance on mining that everybody, including the mine operators in this county, can live with and work with. That's the solution to this, is to ban frac sand mining and update your current ordinance to include some of the, you know, there are some things that need to be improved, I think we can argue about that all night, but I think everybody can live with those improvements, including the mine operators. But this not having a distinction between industrial mining and construction mining is the worst thing that could happen, and it's in a lot of proposed ordinances that you can find on the EQB website, if you're willing to go and look at that. Again, I'd urge you to recommend to the commissioners to reject this ordinance and to adopt a ban, and then go back and make some reasonable updates in the current mining ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, that includes, includes our public comment period, that's all the people we have signed up. So, at this point, you have to sign up for speech, or do you sign up? All right. At this point, we need to decide here on the planning zoning commission how we proceed on this. I think we need to, my own feeling is that we need to stop to think about this now, and so today, probably the thing to do is table this, or we actually do some more studying. Now, we have a meeting published and set up for January 22nd, and discussing this ordinance is on the pocket, and it has been published in a paper. Now, one possibility would be that we would need, we would have the study committee that wrote this ordinance come in, if you guys want to talk to them about that, I mean, use them as a resource to talk about this, and if you have more, you know, background information, because I know a lot of you, we have two new members, and there are only two of us who are on that study committee, so there's a lot of background information on this, that a lot of you would have some questions with the study committee. So that's a possibility, but I'm going to leave that up to the planning commission members, if that's something they want to do, if they do... So, any discussion? Okay, so, anyone else, how do you feel about it? Do you want to have the study committee members come, and we take testimony from it? Actually, what, we take testimony from them, or we also actually have an open discussion or a conversation with them regarding these very ordinances, the language in these ordinances? And then, that meeting very well could last for a couple hours more, and then, actually, I think we need to keep on meeting, and maybe we should, in my mind, might be doubtful whether we can just get to a consensus at the end of the January 22nd meeting. So, we may want to publish a January 29th meeting to continue, because any of the meetings we have, we have a 10-day publishing department, and all these meetings, all these discussions are available. So...
I think the people have spoken. The people here have spoken.
Now, listen, the public comment period is over, we have heard you. This planning commission is going to consider what you have said, we have heard you, you have videotaped it and supported it.
Mr. Chairman, Henry pointed us on to the... Wait a second. Sorry. A whole lot of others. Wait a second. Wait a second. The two-week period is on, but there's an awful lot of language and stuff going through here.
There is.
To discuss.
Chuck it.
It's probably those who are, you know what I mean?
Chuck it.
There's a series of frac sand, just, there's an awful lot of stuff that we have an ink set. We can discuss it at that meeting, and the members that were on... We can discuss it at a meeting, and the members that were on the study committee want and force their opinions, I think that would be fine. That'd be great. And then we can consider all the input that we've got here.
I don't think that a much more separate toys and dusty sand, they could have been used forever and never get passed. But as a forty operator on the, Mr. Martin said, we don't do care of our industrial sand. We want to keep our boys in our sand, the same in the production sand. If we don't separate them, we'll never get through.
Any other comments? I think we need, I think we need to have the authors there for the changes. We need to understand why they did what they did. Is this on? We need to understand why they did what they did, and if they're, you know, if we're going to change their ordinance, we should have their draft. Or yeah, I'm sorry, the draft. Okay, this conversation that I think, no, I can't open it. If you had one chance to speak, okay?
Just one. We'll have clarification on meeting day.
Okay. What's that?
On meeting day.
Yeah.
Is this a separate meeting from the zoning?
No, we have a regular scheduled meeting on January 22nd. That's the next time we're going to take this up publicly, not at a public meeting.
It's just putting hurt.
We have one other hearing that night that's on the schedule, and that hearing will be held first, and then after that hearing, you will take up the subject of mining.
So it probably will be 7:15 or more before we get this. It may be 7:30 from that person. Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, well, any motion available to this conference at this point? Is that what everybody wants to do? Are your motions made available? All directed by the Central Energy Committee. Second, I...
No.